I have it like this. Yeah. Just like that, I don't really like.
Let's do this. You open. I got it. You got it?
You're on your side.
Yes. Call to order the planning commission meeting for November 2nd, 2022. Roll call.
Peral.
Here.
Butke.
Here.
Coon.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Maticek.
Here.
Matson. Reichert.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Wosick.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, reading an approval of the minutes from our October 5th meeting 2022. Mr. Reichert.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Reichert, seconded by Mr. Lunskey. Any further discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motions are approved as submitted. Public hearings, final approvals, petitions, minor changes, Jane.
Item 3-1, public hearing, appeal to the DDP for variances. The front paving setback for Caribou Coffee Lot 1, Block 1, Perkins 2nd Edition located at 3131 and 3151, 32nd Avenue South.
Ms. Edwardson.
So, real quick, before we get started with that, we'll do a quick department announcement, if that's okay. We have our, one of our other newest hires are planning, Sierra Johnson. She has to step out a little early just because she's got UND Senate and some other classes tonight, but she was able to come tonight, so I wanted to introduce her quick before she left. And if she does leave early, it's not because she's not interested, it's just because she's also a full-time student going for a master's. So, we're happy to have her, but did want to make that announcement real quick.
Welcome.
Yes. So, then jumping into the item, we're at the Burger King site out on 32nd Avenue South. We were approached last year to kind of a different way to utilize the excess parking on-site, which is how the Caribou Cabin, which is just a drive-through only coffee shop, no walk-up, no onsite seating or anything like that, kind of came to be in using that, excellent use of the excess parking on-site. So, with that, we went through the site plan process, as you'll see, and you know, I told Brian we had to share the screen, and then I didn't do it, so. And then, so you'll see the site plan that we came up with, thinking that, you know, ingress to the Burger King and then egress out for the Caribou Cabin, which is on the east side here, Burger King on the west side. As it came up, in actual construction of the site, it kind of came to light that even though the drive aisle meets code, potentially should Burger King ever have a lengthy queuing area that may come in conflict with the exiting area of Caribou. And so, this proposal to create a bypass lane for the egress, kind of jumping up over here and then all the way around back out, was a solution the contractor proposed, as well as the owner. And staff's in support of it, though it does encroach into our parking setback by five feet. We do have a 10-foot parking setback from the street, and so that's the reason, that would be the reason for the appeal, though staff is supportive of the request. So, could answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Mr. Coon.
I was by that today, and you're gonna have, somebody's gonna move a sidewalk, I think, if you put that in. That sidewalk curves down towards where that lane is gonna be, and if they, if that sidewalk isn't moved, you're gonna be having that within a matter of a couple of feet of the driving lane.
So, the sidewalks represented on the site here, up here, there is a substantial amount of right-of-way, and so it may be a perception piece of it, but they would be five feet within the property line, and it's probably another 10 to 12 feet beyond the property line to that sidewalk. So, there's probably about 17 feet from it, as shown on the plan. So, from a staff perspective, there might be a perception when you're driving by and how close, but from a distance actually, we felt it would be okay.
Anyone else have a question? Good question, Mr. Coon. Do you require open public hearing?
And I can...
Anybody want to step up and address 3-1? Please do so at this time. Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the commission. Mr. Reichert.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Reichert, seconded by Ms. Sandy. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes. One upstanding. 3-2.
Item 3-2, public hearing, fast track replat of Lot 5, Block 1, Myers 5th Edition, with variance to access control located at 2200 South 42nd Street.
Ms. Edwardson.
Yes, we're a little bit farther west at this point. This would be the third phase of Myers. We recently did a plat and a PUD. However, going into the minutia of the site plan review, we had some concerns and issues with the, what we thought would be the egress for the site. They were originally going to come up with a proposal that would utilize lining up 24th Avenue South for their further south egress of the development. This would be the multifamily complex that continues from just north of here all the way down. The original plan was to have that egress come out here. They weren't able to strike a deal with the owner to the south to acquire that land to do that, and so access is needed north of 24th Avenue South, Avenue South, excuse me, to accommodate that. So, the plat that's proposed indicates the, if I can jump to it, where we're looking to have that gap in access control being between Phase 2 and Phase 3, which is approximately about here on the GIS. So, we have a substantial distance from 24th Avenue South, as well as some distance between Valley to have, to lessen any traffic concerns and conflicts. So, staff's recommending approval of that access control and plat request.
Okay, another public hearing. Anybody got anything before I open up the public hearing? Not seeing any hands, open a public hearing. Anybody can step up the microphone, address item 3-2, do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, back to the commission. Mr. Butke, please.
24th Avenue, what is the plan for that? Like, I see right-of-way being designated here, utility easements. What is the city's vision for that, west of 42nd?
Well, right now, the land south of Myers 5th and the Empire Town Home Complex is, I believe it's unplatted property. And so, whenever that gets developed, that would come in with a plat. We would take the appropriate amount of right-of-way at that time to further the west side of that expansion, as well as have a discussion with them about access at that point. Knowing we have an access to the north now, do we need a full access or a shared access, so to speak? No, it'd probably act as almost a private drive at that point. And so, we don't yet know what that southern development might be. We don't have any proposals, but if and when something were ever to occur, we'd look at it at that point.
Thanks, Mr. Butke. Any further?
And Ryan pointed out, there must be some overhead lines of some sort, so.
Yeah, you can see the overhead power, and that's kind of, that utility corridor really is that overhead power with Mankota.
Sure. Power lines are...
Any motion or questions or comments? Mr. Reichert?
I'll move approval.
Moved by Mr. Reichert, seconded by Mr. Lunskey. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 3-2 passes. 3-3.
Item 3-3, public hearing, fast track replat of Lot A of the replat of Lot 1, Summers 4th subdivision located at 2315 North Washington Street.
Ms. Grasser.
Good evening. So, we're on the north end here, in between North Columbia and North Washington. They're looking to split this Lot A, future Lot C, there is a tenant there renting, and they would remain, and this has plans to be sold. Each lot would split this 15-foot each ingress-egress, shared access there. And I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Grasser before we open the public hearing? I'll open it up. Anybody in the audience that can step up and address 3-3, do so at this time? No one? Bring it back to the commission, close the public hearing. Anyone? Questions, comments? Mr. Reichert?
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Reichert?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Coon. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion 3-3 passes. 3-4.
Item 3-4, billboard sign for South Washington Street located at 3901 South Washington Street.
Mr. Brooks.
So, has been the, kind of, the theme for the last year. There's billboard conversations that we've had, so we've, earlier in the year, we opened up allowing, we used to have a limit of nine billboards that were allowed on South Washington Street, demers to the southern extent of the ET. And so, in addition, also, to start the year, we expanded and allowed 11 more billboards as was, was allowed through the census process. So, last month, we had Newman signs was before us for one additional sign of those 11, and then today, we have a request for two additional signs of those 11, both on South Washington Street. So, that kind of covers this item and the next one, but this request is for 3901 South Washington Street, which is the Marcos Pizza location. And this one's a little bit different than the previous request in that now we're dealing with an area of South Washington Street that's much wider, a lot more right-of-way. You're talking 200 feet versus, or 200-plus feet of right-of-way versus those other areas like north of Hammerling Avenue. Washington Street's a lot tighter. So, in this case, they're gonna be going right here, 3901. We did do notification on this. We hadn't heard anything, so this one's also a public hearing. Staff is recommending approval in terms of, it does meet the code. We don't see sightline issues on this one at all. There is a, this green space, as I continue to move in, it's gonna be located within this green space here that they have. So, with that, we do recommend approval.
Mr. Reichert. Did the public notification include Dakota View Court?
No, I don't believe it did. I'd have to look to see how far out. I think code required 200 feet. I don't think we went beyond South 11th Street.
That concerns me. I mean, it's the only residential area there.
Hmm?
Well, let me check, see how far we went.
That is not gonna work. Oh, we did hit Dakota View.
Okay.
Well, I think they're telling me that they went 400 feet, so code did not require us to go that far, but we, on occasion, go further, so.
I understand that, yeah. When there's, you miss all the residential, that would be bad.
So, do we have any kind of, like, exact location rendering or whatever?
Yeah, I think that was in the packet, too. Let me pull that up.
No. There's just a top view.
There's how, like, the screen and...
How does the 11, 11 by 27 compare to the one we just approved at the old Valley Dairy?
How does, say that again, I'm sorry.
This one is 11 feet wide by 27 feet high, right?
Yeah, for the, for the sign.
How does that compare to the one that went up by Valley Dairy?
Similar. If I can pull that one up from last month.
Perfect.
Well, that's not the view I wanted.
Do you real curl to close, Mr. Brooks? The other one's 11 by 27?
Yeah, I want to say they're standard, so I believe they're both the same.
Okay.
There you go. 11 by 27.
Is it also 15? Yeah, because it's, it mentions 14 feet of each.
Yep. So, they're 15 off the ground, 11 by 27. I think it's a pretty standard design. Certainly, the experts are in the audience of the way they put these up. If you put them up too high, then they're, you know, it kind of gets out of line as well.
We had louvers perps on the other one as well, I believe.
We did not ask for that on this one, just because you're looking at two residentials in between, but I can, we can certainly ask that, and he can provide more detail of what he's having, or if that's a request to put up similar. The applicant is here.
I just, I just kind of like seeing the record and how it's gonna look. We asked for that last time. We may come back the next month, so they wasted a month. So, I want to see that. That's me, maybe me being me. If we're not gonna spend the time on that, then why?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you...
I said, I'd like to see the rendering. I'd like to see the whole sign of where it was. It was easy for the guys who did it last time, said, "No problem." They did a nice job, got the Valley Dairy one pushed through.
Yeah. You're talking about the rendering as you go down the street?
Well, you know, maybe more than just a blip. I'm not a computer expert, but I could have pulled that one off. Something a little better, I guess, if you're gonna, we're gonna ask for these signs, we want to see what they look like coming in.
Okay. Yeah, I did not ask for the, for that rendering. I don't know if he happens to have that.
I do, but it's only on my phone.
Hi, can, can I email it to you?
Yep, you can email it to me.
I don't know why we...
A. Edwardson.
I'm gonna have to text it to you. Nope, here we go, sorry. What's, what's the email address?
A. Edwardson.
A.E.W.
E.D.W.A.R.D. S.O.N. At GrantWorks.com.
Dot com?
Yep. Yep. I'm gonna run it on my laptop.
Start sending the other one to the same spot, too.
Well, I'm gonna grab the other, the other side of this, though, too.
So, we'll get those here in just a bit. He does have them on his phone. We did not ask for that as part of the application, but he does have those renderings the same. So, is there any other questions while you're waiting for that?
It's not a public hearing marked on here, so...
Yeah, we do do notification. We let people know that they can come.
I don't see anybody.
Yeah, I don't see anybody, and we did not hear any comments in the office from any of the applicants on this one or the next one either.
Okay, then it's up to the commission. Mr. Lunskey, please.
Are we requiring the same kind of finishes on the back of these? That's the standard thing now, or we...
I did not, but if that's, if that is something, we can let them know that we're looking for the same. That other one was directly adjacent residential, but in this case, yeah, if that's something that we want, is that finished look, we can pass that along to everybody and let these folks know.
Let's do it, let's do them all kind of the same.
Okay.
We have a standard, and I think it's within whatever number of feet we just, for residents, we require the, that little louver or whatever.
The louver. Yep. Makes it look a little finished.
Yep.
Yep. It's very possible that they were gonna do it anyway, but we can let them know that that's a requirement as part of this approval.
Because this is final.
Do you understand what they're looking for is that louver on the backside that closes off the V?
On the wind frame?
Yeah.
Say, can you do that? Come on up. Put it on the record.
Good evening. Josh Gillen. Thanks for having us here tonight, commissioners. Yes, Josh Gillen, 2101 North 13th Avenue. Yeah, if the louvers are, if you guys are looking for the louvers, we typically call it a wind frame. Usually, we do it in locations that the back is easily viewable. You know, this particular location, I think the only people that are gonna see the back is the parking, people that pull into that business in the parking lot. If it was closer to the corner and traffic was gonna be seen into the back, it was a, you know, residential area. A lot of times on that back, too, we'll put a wind frame and actually do signage for the local business if it's viewable to, you know, traffic or something like that, so. But we're happy to close it off if you guys think it needs it. We typically do it for locations that we think, you know, they'll see the guts of the, of the sign and...
I think it cleans them up.
Yeah. So.
Let's do them all the same.
Yeah, it's probably another $10,000 or something for us in cost, but it's fine.
Okay, thank you for that.
It's the framing that ends up costing the extra money to hold it, so it doesn't blow off, so.
Sure.
Well, we're moving along nicely.
Do we need to make a motion to approve? Obviously?
If we, he was coming up with the rendering.
They were working on that rendering.
I'm gonna move it to step. Move to table both of them, and then we can come back to them when it gets that rendered.
Yes, I'm good.
Can you table? Is it...
Actually, if you want, we can just, I think we can just move to the transit development plan, which is 4-1, and then come back to both of these items. It's probably gonna be in, up here in probably the next five minutes, so we can get that.
Do we want to do that? Suspend the agenda and come back to it?
Yeah.
Do I gotta hold on that?
Suspend the agenda, bring 4-1 up.
Yeah, bring 4-1 up. We'll return to 4, 3-4 and 3-5 after. What, are you good with that? All those in favor, everybody saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, just want to make sure we're right.
Probably just made Stephanie's day.
Item 4.
I think she had it open already.
Oh, does she? Okay.
Item, I'll go ahead and read this into the record. Item 4-1, preliminary approval of an amendment to the Grant Works Comprehensive Plan to Include the 2045 Transportation Plan Update Alternatives, Transportation Modes, Element Transit.
I heard you have a very quick proposal for us, do you have a solid...
No, no. Blast from the past, right? No, I'm looking at 34 slides and at least five minutes per slide, I thought the plan was. No? Bad joke?
We can take care of that on our end real quick.
All right. Move for approval? Perfect. So, this is just an update, well, it's not an update, it's actually preliminary approval for the transit development plan update. This is something that we would've been working on with Kim Lee Horn for over a year now. We should have Liz from Kim Lee Horn on the line, too, to help with questions, if you guys have any. So, kind of, quick highlights. We've done a lot of recommendations for anywhere from more online presence, modification to routes. I mean, I can go more into detail, I'm not sure how much more detail you want me to go into. I can go through, this is where we are, existing conditions. What we've heard is the buses are very clean, cat, the drivers are very nice, but areas of improvement, they want to see services on weekends, including Sundays, more stuff in the evening, and so a couple different routes. So, those are some of the feedback. There were some modification recommendations for the UND area, so some service improvements. There was talk about microtransit. This is just a recommendation, they're not saying implemented it, implementing it at this time, but they're recommending that we should look at it and further study it further, and this is something we might do in the next year or two at the NPO. Different areas of the city that are looking at doing microtransit, that kind of maybe substitute some of the routes in there, that might help save some money and be a little bit more efficient in those areas. This is looking at Routes 1 and 2. This is also potential for microtransit. Also going over some recommendations for short-term on some of these different routes, like this one on Routes 4 and 6. They say combine Routes 4 and 6 and maybe run a new Route 6. So, a lot of kind of little tweaks and recommendations in there, some midterm recommendations on some of these routes, some partnerships with the school district and UND, which we're currently doing, and just more of that, kind of modifying some of the routes, replacing some routes. This is another area, kind of, looking at doing microtransit instead of some of the routes or, and/or some UND services. This, they're saying, they're recommending maintain as is for the short-term, but maybe some modifications later down the road as things develop more in the area. Night route service, maintain as is, but maybe some different recommendations in long-term program, kind of hinted on it earlier, some more online presence, some branding, more Couple new routes, some bus stop improvements, looking at zero emission buses and solar additions to facilities, looking at like 20 replacements needed for vehicles. These can range in price. Some modifications for bus shelters and transit hub improvements, and these are just a couple of our hub areas, too, and some improvements there. This can be even like sidewalk improvements, ADA accessibility to some of these areas. There was a final draft comment period from September 21st through October 7th. At this time, we have not received any comments, and I am welcome to open it up to any comments or questions.
Mr. Reichert? I had some people reach out to me from UND. A couple things that they were wondering about from students was, can they get, is there a route that goes between campus and downtown, and can it come back later, like when the bars close? No, I'm serious, I mean, and that makes sense to me, I mean...
Hey, Liz, you want to hint on that question?
Yeah, so, a couple different routes actually run by campus, like Routes 1 and 5 go to campus and serve campus in addition to their campus routes, but they do have limited hours, they do tend to end before, before a bar close, for example. But what, we talked about with UND, and I think something that the students were really receptive of, was having something sort of like this microtransit service at night. So, these would be evening hour shuttles that would ride, that would pick people off up at distinct locations and drop them off at campus at distinct stops, but it wouldn't follow a route, so it would be point-to-point, and it would be a faster service, and it would be on-demand, so something they could access over their phone. So, that was something that was looked at, and I do know, we had a lot of conversations with UND about improving the service and making sure it met the needs of students there, and I think that there's gonna be ongoing conversations about what that night service looks like. So, to be continued, I think in the next year, Terry Kuba and the folks from, from CAP were planning to talk more about it with UND.
And then, wasn't there also something, and I didn't quite understand it, because I don't know this area very well, but they either pay a lump sum or a per-ride, right? UND is subsidizing on either a lump sum or a per-ride, and they were looking at trying to change that? Is that something that's in this plan, or...
You know, I don't have those details. I know that's something that Dale from Cities Area Transit was handling. I think right now, they do pay a lump sum for their entire contract, was like something like $240,000, but don't quote me on that, and I do believe that they will be, but maybe that's something that they were looking at talking about with him, but I don't have that information.
And is there a route between campus and like the mall area, or down south to the shopping areas?
Yes, so Route 13 is like the evening route, and it, it goes towards campus and then goes down to the shopping areas. There's also routes during the day, it's Route 8 and 9, which run in a loop that go down from sort of the campus area down to the mall, and I think that's it for the routes now that, that run that loop, otherwise people have to transfer downtown, and then they can take, they can take a route that goes downtown and transfer to routes that go to the mall more directly, but...
So, is there a route that kids can get from campus to a grocery store?
Yes, well, so the Route 5, for example, with the way we have it recommended, too, it goes to Walmart, and it also goes downtown towards the Hugos. The Route 1 also goes to campus and goes downtown, and I believe it passes near Hugos. And then Routes 8 and 9, they go sort of down in a, in a southern loop around the city, and they go by some Hugos, and then they go down to the Target and to stuff by Columbia Mall, and then go back up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Butke?
Yeah, so I, just some more questions on the, the microtransit.
Yeah, so I, just some more questions on the, the microtransit. So, I paged through here, there's sort of like three different scenarios, is that, is that a fair way of describing it? Like ways that, that the city cat could proceed, sort of like a stay-the-course, sort of?
Yeah, there's study areas of where we would wanna further look at those areas, yeah.
Okay, and so is it the city council that like decides on the, this like microtransit idea?
Well, it would first go to, we would further study it, it would probably go more through the M P O, and that would be a request from the city to have the M P O do that.
Okay.
And then, once that plan is developed, then it's up to the city to implement it.
Okay, so I'm, I'm glad that we were talking about the microtransit a bit, 'cause that seems, like that seems to be quite a big shift to me, I mean, it seemed like in the report, there's this description of like how the, the cost for delivering that service sort of flip over time, like right now, that's a more expensive option, but perhaps a decade from now, that would be the, the more affordable option. I guess my question would be, when we look at providing that to just like a, like a service area, but then it's also described as point-to-point, so does that mean like the, the trips have to originate in a certain region, like a certain zone?
Yes, but again, that would be something that we'll further dive down into when we do the study, and we'll get all those details.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess I'm very intrigued by that, it sounds like, it sounds very similar to like an Uber or a taxi, traditional taxi.
Yeah.
My, the one concern I guess I have in the back of my mind is, a lot of those zones are sort of along the University Avenue corridor, and I'm aware that, you know, this, that corridor, like over and over again, and I know there's like ongoing meetings about this, is like a, an important multimodal corridor, that like keeps coming up, is identified, and I feel like the way to do that would be to lean into like more, the more frequent higher-capacity option. So, if like the blue and the purple zone, if those are now more microtransit, does that undercut that, that broader vision at a time when we ought to like lean into the, like thickening up along that corridor?
Right, I mean, that's just one way to look at it, I mean, really, this is just another, as things change, as our habits and everything change, it's just another way to look at how we use our system and another form of transportation and adapting to things, so it's just really, once we go and dive more down into that study and see if that's something that works for our area, those, all those questions will be answered. It might work out where it maybe not work for us and might not pencil out, but it's definitely worth looking at. I mean, there's some things that we need to start being a little bit more flexible with the transit and everything like that, so just looking at different ways to kind of change things up a little bit, that makes more sense for our area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Budkey. Anything else? I guess we got a, Mr. Ryker?
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Ryker, seconded by Mr. Budkey. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you, and just one last little plug, there's a bicycle pedestrian, we're also doing that plan right now, that's gearing up, that's on November sixteenth at East Grand Forks City Hall, and then, well, the other one is the street and highway plan, I'm not sure where that file is, that's tomorrow night at the East Grand Forks Library. So, you're welcome to attend both. Thank you.
Thanks.
And just a reminder, this is preliminary, well, this'll also be on for final, we won't plan to, we'll have the presentation available, we won't plan to make it on final, but that will be the official public hearing.
Sounds good. Item four two.
Item four dash two, preliminary approval of the rezoning of sixteen-hundred Fourth Avenue, North Wesley United Church to United Way Micro P U D zoning.
Mr. Brooks.
That's quite a mouthful, but just so everybody knows, the Wesley United Church that's just, we're on the university corridor, again, it's just north of University Avenue on Fourth Avenue North, between, I believe it's Sixteenth and Seventeenth Street, North Sixteenth, North Seventeenth, it's the previous Saint James High School, for those who've been around a lo, a while, I guess that was prior to me, but then it, then it was a church, all of those are something, a church, school, those are allowed within the residential district, so we've got this asset in the middle of this neighborhood, and so what's being looked at is United Way looked at purchasing this and looking to do a daycare center there, so this is our second daycare center in the north end, but the uniqueness of the building, it's, it's got a lot of other space, being that it's a former high school, they're also looking at doing some offices in there, so I think Safe Kids specifically is also looking to locate with them, so it's a great use, I think it does fit with the neighborhood. The other thing they're looking at is potential to do some, a coffee shop, like within the building, not like a drive-through or anything, but within the building, and I, I don't know if that's fully been vetted out, but they're actually putting that in as a potential use, so with this P U D, it's a little, little bit of an unconventional P U D in that they're not gonna be, they're not looking at building anything new on the site itself, but they are, the P U D consists of legal description address, lot size, but then there's these proposed uses, so office, childcare center, the community assistance, kids instruction, that's really the Safe Kids portion of it, we probably would've been good with that, you know, under a school almost setting anyway, but then the coffee shop within the building and no drive-through, so we specifically kinda made that kind of as a piece. I don't think a drive-through, even as I kinda, kinda look at this as a side, I think that'd be more traffic than would probably be likely beneficial to this neighborhood, but, so we were a little concerned about that, but I think it's a great way of trying something different, and it's also something that Sierra was working with the university neighborhood and actually working with some folks, they kinda wanted to see this as well, so we thought this was a, was a great way to try it, and United Way was receptive to that as well, so the, all, everything else, we're gonna follow the B one, which is a office district as well, so if this all looks good, this is preliminary approval, again, we go to final next, and that's an eight-hundred-foot notification around the area, so with that, we'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Brooks? I do like the no-drive-through on there, 'cause that would've stirred the residents in. What's that? Moved by Ms. Sandy?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Orell. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Four, two passes, you and I. So, let us go back to three, four, do we have any updates?
Potentially.
Three dash four, South Washington billboard sign thirty-nine oh one.
So, here's the Marcos Pizza, which was three dash four on the agenda, the thirty-nine oh one, this is what that'll look like.
Yeah.
Fifteen foot up, eleven by twenty-seven high, forty-two to the top, and that's the same as that Newman sign. This is taken right from the, the intersection as well. In terms of sign clutter, you don't have a lot of other signs along that stretch, 'cause it's a, storage is behind here, so they don't have a ton of signage along that stretch on that side of the road.
Okay. Thank you for providing that.
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Ms. Orell?
Yes, so long as we have the specifications that sort of adhere to what we, yeah.
The backside is all.
Exactly.
Okay. I think what they're looking for is that backside. Yeah, okay, perfect. So, that is in Ms. Orell's, okay, Ms. Rolinski, second step. Any further comment? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item three, five.
Item three dash five, off-premise billboard sign for South Washington Street located at eighteen forty-four South Washington Street.
Okay, this is the hot, I know I'm not gonna say this right, hot pool spa, hot springs, thank you. It's out in front of the old Kmart, Kmart actually has gone through, you know, quite a few changes, I don't know if you've, if everybody's been by there, but the marketplace is looking really good there. This is gonna be on that outlot that's out front, again, lot of space, there's a, this is a frontage road, this one's gonna be back to your horizontal, ten-by-thirty, double-sided monopole V degree, so we'll ask them again to do that backside coverage as well. This one's gonna go up to fifty-foot high, so it is eight-foot higher than the other one, but I do believe that there's a little bit more distance here because of that frontage road distance back from Washington, which is typically when you get that a little bit higher, when you get a little bit more distance from the, from the main road, which they're out there to advertise to Washington, so with that, I'll answer any questions, or the applicant is here who can probably answer most of them.
Yeah, so, this one goes over the building?
That's correct, yeah. That, that's just a single story there, I believe.
It's hard to tell from here, we're, how far, I mean, you following all of Excel's guidelines for staying back from the power poles, I'm sure you are, but just kind of a...
So, what, can I ask, can you come up here, please? So, what's your agreement with the, the property owner as far as the, the being over his building?
We've done lots of projects with, with billboards over buildings, you know, Applebee's, we've gone over the top of Applebee's. Sometimes when you're dealing with properties that are, you know, have tight spaces, which most commercial buildings tend to, and we're not dealing with parking lot space, sometimes we have to go up against the building, and then we end up, you know, flagging it over the, the top of the building, so.
So, if, is your agreement, I assume it's some sort of a lease agreement, I mean, what if somebody else buys it, wants to tear that down and put a two-story building in there?
You know, our lease agreement, it, it just depends on the new owner, but our lease agreement will typically inherit to the new owner.
Right.
Sometimes the previous owner will keep the lease in their name and keep the income, and it's not part of the deal. We always try to work with our property owners when there's something like that. If we can move the, the sign so it accommodates their build and we don't lose our location, or we can go to the neighbor and, you know, maybe, let's say this is ten years down the road or five years down the road, sometimes the neighbors change hands and they're interested in having a sign, then we would move it over to there, so.
I've been working with Vince, the owner, hand-in-hand, so he's aware of this proposal, and he knows that that's what it is, and fully signed off on it and has been in agreement.
Yeah, all of our builds are always subject to landowner approval, so.
There's just a huge unused area, I know it's a different owner, but...
Well, they, they were looking to the property to the north, they have not changed their zoning from B two yet, and billboards are not allowed in a B two, so.
North or south?
To the north, we did change the south with the Kmart piece.
That's a lot.
But they were looking to the, and I, I don't know what other plans that they had for the future for the south of it, so.
They just, I can speak to open spot, it seems like we're just matching stuff in the top of each other, but that's not...
I can speak to that property to the south, in dealing with Thrive Church and that group, they are looking to modify that parcel of property, and they don't want anything in there, and I encumber them selling or redoing what they're going to do.
Anything, any other questions for these gentlemen? Moved by Ms. Sandy?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Orell. Any further discussion? I'm just gonna note that I think in the future, you guys are up here, I, I think you put this stuff in the packet, it just helps us visualize it, and it really does, so just to save time, and otherwise you could've got tabled and had to dragged it out another month, 'cause that...
We'll be sure to communicate that, that that is something that you guys wanna see, and also the louvers on the backside, so.
I just wanted to document it in the discussion, that we'd like to see that, it just sure helped.
And to scale.
Yep. Okay, with that, I'll call for vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you kinda covered that. Reports on the planning department, Mr. Brooks.
So, last time, I think we talked a little bit about the, the animal discussion, we put together packets, did that get out, okay, they're, they should be on up front, Haley put those together for us, she looked as well at what other cities had done, so all of that's in there, for the most part, I would say we're rather aligned with the other cities, that doesn't mean that maybe we all don't need to look at how we're doing things. Definitely dog daycare, we have a lot more information in there, more prescriptive, I should say, on how we put things together, still conditional use, but on top of the conditional use, there's special conditions, so that was one that did stand out to me that, but when we were drafting, probably not, well, maybe only a few were here at the time, when we started the dog daycares, that was brand-new, nobody knew how those things were gonna go, and I would say in terms of complaints that we've had, there haven't been many, but that's kinda, when we're trying something new, we have a tendency to put in a lot of those rules, asking for those things, then over time, sometimes we say, you know what, we can pull that back, it's conditional use, we can always put them back in, or we can leave it as is and, and continue on as, as we're doing, so, but with that, that's the information we have on all of them that we have, all those, those pet requirements. I know that animal boarding also, there's another part of code that that's in, but we only put in what was planning and zoning-related, but there are some other requirements, too, with code, that I think finance would be happy just turning those over to conditional use just entirely, but not too sure where, what, we have some more discussion with city council, 'cause there's some stuff that would be outside of our purview of code, which is chapter eighteen, the land development code, but there are some other pieces as well, licensing and those types of things do fall in another part of code, but it's possible that we could strip those off and just leave them with the conditional use. But we're, we're really here to stand to, you know, if, if that's something that we wanna kick to a committee, if that's something that, you guys just wanna chew on that for a month, we're really, we can do it.
Look at Frankie, initiated this, to have to do this homework on it, it's good, he initiated him to have to do the homework on it, so. Well, yes, what do you see? You know, if we look at all of this, you got pet stores, then you got an adoption, you made society city pound, you got boarding facilities, oh, sorry, you got boarding facilities, you got grooming facilities, you got vet services, you got doggy daycare. To me, they're all different, look at them all in different ways. The, what, what I was upset about was, is that the hoops a journey home had to go through, all the seven questions they had to have answered, when I felt the adoption center, Circle of Friends, was exactly the same type of operation, and they didn't have to answer those questions, and they didn't have to have a conditional use permit. I know the zone was different, but it seems like to me that when these, when these facilities are in an industrial area, they're pretty safe, to me, you know, compared to the neighbors complaining about dogs barking and... Far as complaints go, you're right. Yeah, yeah, so, but if you go around Grand Forks, there's grooming areas all over this city, residential areas, I don't even know if they're permitted or not, it doesn't matter to me, I, I think they're doing whatever they're doing, but there's quite a few grooming areas and houses, probably like some daycares or whatever, it's a necessary service, so it's being done. So, that, that was the reason I looked at it. If, if you wanna put together a committee to look at all of this stuff, you know, the vet, the vet services, pretty much A-one, A-two, that's okay, and industrial, they should be okay, I would guess, I can't remember if they are in industrial or not.
For which one, I'm sorry?
The vet, vets.
Uh, yeah, we let them, they're, it's within that document, but we do small animal vets and B threes, and then we just did the conditional for the large, right? We just went through that code.
But we kept the large and industrial or A-one, A-two.
That's my, that's my recollection.
Yeah, you only have the one large industri, or you, the only one large vet here in town anyway, right now.
Uh, one request, yeah, that's all we've had so far, yeah.
And the other thing that we don't have is an emergency... And the other thing that we don't have is emergency services right now. Anything after eight o'clock, a lot of nights has to go to Fargo and there's a lot of concern about that. I think that's going to change. I think there is going to become a emergency vet service someplace here fairly soon, but not right now. Where it would be located, I don't know, so. But if they had some guidance, if they had to be in an industrial or if they had to be in an A1, A2, that would help them cite what...
Yeah, we'd be happy to have that conversation if somebody was looking at that, but I would, you know, I'd probably, you know, probably place that into a clinic, like a clinic to me, but...
Well, I, I think part of this too, there should be some people from the, actually from the police department, animal control. I know some people there that are retired from animal control and there's some out there now. And there is no animal control in Grand Forks after six o'clock, right now.
That just kind of sounds like that's not a zoning issue as much as that's a different operational issue, yeah.
I know, but the animal control part of this is where these animals are dumped off for the City Pound. When they are picked up, stray cats, stray dogs, whatever. I know the raccoons, they take them up by my place and dump them instead of doing anything else with them, but...
We can get your address, see if...
Yeah, right. They just go back into town, they follow the river anyway, so whatever, but. So, that was, that was my point about it. I just wanted to make sure that if we're going to do this conditional use permit with that type of a group, we need to keep that same standard, otherwise...
Well, and I, just so everybody knows...
What I'd like to do, if, if it's all right, I'd like to, we just got this tonight. Obviously, I haven't read through it. I just got it the same time you guys did. I'd like to take and read through it this month and then come back to it and say, okay, do we feel the need to develop a subcommittee and where do we want to go from here? I think then everybody can read what the homework they did. That's just my thought, Frank, just because I, I haven't read it. And that's fine. I've had three, four citizens or people contact me that would like to be involved in this process. So, you know. Great. People that are in the animal business and people that are involved with the Humane Society and Journey Home. And, because we have a lot of area that's not real clear. Yeah. So, if you're okay with that? Yeah, I'm okay with that. So, I'd like to do, just chew on it. I think everybody's shaking their head, yeah. Perfect, so.
Is there anybody waiting on us to make decisions?
Nobody at this time.
Nope, nope. We have not put a stop on, we treated the, the request for the adoption center as a pet store and I believe that's proceeding, so I haven't heard anything otherwise, so.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks for that. Any other business? Item seven, Ms. Ryker? Moved to adjourn. Seconded by Mr. Relensky, all those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Who you did? Come on. Hey, we're, we're getting a lot...